Commission to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I'll have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Barlow. Commissioner Bradshaw.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Hassett.
Present.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo. Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Morse. And Chairperson Gillette.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We now have an automated announcement.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Thank you. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with a recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, September the fifth, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. in this same location with the exception of any continued items. We are going to approve the minutes from some of our previous meetings. So the first one to be approved is April the 12th, 2023. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to...
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Morse. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We move to the April the 13th, 2023 minutes. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
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 Not approved?
Opposed.
So moved. May 10th, 2023 minutes. I need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We are not doing June or July's today. Now we have a discussion regarding the bylaws and Roberts Rules of Order by Tim Walsh, who isn't here. Who's doing that?
Mr. Holtry.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we just wanted to kind of go over, I believe last meeting there was some confusion on the Roberts Rules of Order and the... and the motions that were made. We just wanted to kind of clarify why when we forwarded the recommendation to the Board, it ended up being an approval. When we looked at the bylaws that we have here at the Commission, what it comes down to is if the Commission votes to deny an item, and it is actually denied by the majority of the Commission, then our bylaws state that we will forward that motion or that item to the Board of Supervisors as an approval. And so that's what we did with the item on the last meeting for the solar facility, that the first motion that was made was to deny it, and that failed. So then the motion then went to the Board of Supervisors as an approval. So we just wanted to clarify that for you, just so you know, for this meeting. I do believe it is on our agenda for September, we're going to be looking at our bylaws to kind of go through some of those to maybe clear it up a little bit better so that it's makes a little bit more sense. We're going to look at that and a few other items in those bylaws. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, I just wanted to say, at that meeting, we are going to be have the ability to change these?
Madam Chair, I think that's just the discussion portion, and then we would probably put something on the agenda to change it in the future. So we would look at all the things that we would like to change, and then from there we would put something on the agenda to actually change them promptly.
Because if I remember correctly, we voted to turn that down eventually at that meeting, and yet it went to the Board of Supervisors as an affirmative?
So the... and that's where it was kind of confusing in the meeting, and I watched it a few times, and I apologize, I wasn't here at that meeting, but I've watched it a few times, and the first recommendation for that item was to deny it, and that recommendation failed, or that motion failed. And going to our bylaws, anytime a motion fails, that's a denial, then it states that we will forward that recommendation to the Board that it's approved. And so it's kind of different, and that's why we want to take a look at it in the future. So that's what we're going to be doing this next meeting. But so, just to clarify, now, if on any of the items that you see before you today, if any Commissioner makes a recommendation to deny the item, and that motion fails because there's not enough supporting the denial, then we don't entertain another motion, it just is forwarded as an approval, if that makes sense.
And just as a caveat to that, if... because as we were reading through these, which makes it even a little bit more confusing is that we... it does say in our bylaws that we do follow Roberts Rules of Order as well, so there's a conflict in that that's gone on for decades, I guess.
Right.
And so we will be clarifying that. If you, as, say you want to approve something, but you want to add a condition to that approval, say somebody denies it, you would have to then make a motion to... for, if you wanted to add a condition to that approval, which is a little bit different. So hopefully, within this next month, we can, we will be having a meeting. Chairperson Gillette, Vice Chair Hassett, we will make some arrangements to meet with you, as well with our attorney and staff to... and if anyone else would like to be included, please let me know, and that way we can, you know, go through and make sure that our bylaws are what you would like to have them.
Because I like the system we have going without... we didn't know, I didn't know about the bylaws. So the system we have going works.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would agree with the Roberts Rules of Orders way of doing it, and that's why we would like to clarify in our bylaws a little bit better way to do it in the future, so.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Scott? Okay, then we'll move on to item number one, Alex Brolin.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 40214112 from an RE 10A residential recreation 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an RE 2A residential recreation 2-acre minimum lot size zone and an RE 1A residential recreation 1-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the scenic vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard...
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Anyone else want to speak on item number one? I have a Dan Stubbs that filled out a request. Your name and address, please.
Dan Stubbs, 1242 Kerosene Lampport, Mesquite, Nevada. I have a documentation that's been signed by several neighbors. The signatures below do not oppose the parcel split, but our concern is that nothing resembling commercial business be placed there. There are neighbors adjoining the property that have established homes that have values upwards of $750,000 plus. We believe that a commercial business would decrease the value of our property and homes. Other concerns have been voiced regarding nuisance factors. These concerns include noise, dust pollution, air quality, machinery, and traffic. Our neighborhood was built with expectations of peaceful environment, with the quality of life, being able to spend time in our backyards without these nuisance. Also, another concern that neighbors have is there's already been grading on this parcel that has now made the water a problem for the property owners adjoining this property. Again, we're not opposed to the lot split, but we're opposed with some of the things that are being said that are going to happen with the adjoining property. Some pictures of some of the homes that are in place there.
Yeah.
There you go. It's really a nice neighborhood. Some of the family members that are proposing this lot split have said that they're planning on doing some things that really do resemble commercial, and the neighbors are opposed of that, and we just wanted to voice our opinion.
Can you tell me what those things are?
We've heard that they're wanting to do a fish farm with employees and have employee parking, and again, we're opposed with anything resembling commercial.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Is the applicant available?
Apparently not. Commissioner Alexander.
I have a question for the staff. It's currently zoned RE, and in the status that it sits right now, could that owner put a fish farm on there?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Alexander, RE's zone does allow for any agricultural uses, and we have deemed that fish, a fishery or fish farm would be considered an agricultural use.
So currently, he could make that move regardless if we deny his proposal or accept it?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Which begs the question, why does he want the change? If he can do what he wants to do now, why does he want to change it?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the... what's placed before you is to split the lot lower than what the current minimum allows for right now, so they're just looking to divide the parcel. So the rezone isn't changing any of the uses on the property. The rezone is changing the minimum lot size so that they can make a smaller lot on the property.
Well, the way I look at it, it's 10 acre now, and he wants to make it 2 acres, and that would be five 2-acre parcels.
Madam Chair, so the rezone is actually for a 2-acre minimum and also a 1-acre minimum. I'm not sure, do they have a site plan that they proposed?
Yeah, so at the end of the staff report is an exhibit. The exhibit shows they're currently... their current proposal is to end up with four lots from the... so three of them will have that 2-acre minimum lot size, and then one of them would have a 1-acre.
That's seven acres.
Madam Chair, so the minimum lot size is just the smallest the lot could be, so on this, you have one of them that's going to be 2.33, one that's 2.35, one that's 3.76, and one that's 1.32. So it's just the minimum, it's not the actual size of the property.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Any of the Commissioners have anything you would like to say? Okay, then I'm going to call for a motion.
Motion to approve item one with staff recommendations.
Can we close the public hearing, please? I'm sorry.
What happened?
I don't...
Close the public hearing, please.
Oh, I closed the public hearing. Sorry. Commissioner Hassett, would you like to make a motion?
May I make a motion to approve number one with staff recommendations?
Second. Second by Bradshaw. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. We will move to item number two, Amy Patsy.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 22439010 to allow for mortuary product production in a C-28 highway commercial zone in the Mojave Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Madam Chair, I need to declare conflict.
Oh, yes, sir. So Commissioner Morse is leaving the room. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Do you wish to speak? You will answer any questions, okay? Are there any others that wish to speak on this item? Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I do.
Commissioner Martin?
What type of product are you referring to? Produce?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This is really just a light assembly type use, so the product will be delivered to the facility and then assembled and shipped elsewhere. So the products are going to be corrugated cardboard, cremation boxes, there's going to be some urns, eventually there may be caskets and some other light wood type products, but initially it's going to be corrugated cardboard primarily.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to ask any questions? Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. We have item number three, staff report, Peggy Clements.
Item three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 30640016M from an AR 5A agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval for standard conditions.
Thank you. Going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak? Just answer questions, okay? Anyone else wanting to speak on this item? Do the Commissioners have any questions? I'll close the public hearing and ask for a vote. A motion.
A motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number four is Peggy Clements.
Item four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 30643008A from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to a C-2H 10A highway commercial 10-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for retail stores and mini storage units in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval for standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this subject? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the Commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number five, Alex Brolin.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 30609021 from an AR 2A agricultural residential 2-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak? Just questions, okay? Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Then I'll close the public hearing and ask if the Commissioners have any questions of the applicant. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number six, Amy Patsy.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a general commercial land use designation to a suburban residential land use designation, and a rezone from an A general zone to an AR agricultural residential zone for Assessor's parcel number 32604007 to allow for a minor land division in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak? Are there any others that wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the Commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion with standard conditions.
Commissioner Morse. Second. Was back with us. And a second by Commissioner Bradshaw. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number seven A, staff reporter, Alex Brolin.
Item seven A is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of a portion of Assessor's parcel number 20612014 and 20612016 from an A general zone to an MX heavy manufacturing zone to allow for bulk fuel sales and distribution in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak?
Chairperson Gillette, they are available on Teams if you would like to have questions.
Thank you. Is anyone else here who wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Alexander?
Yes, I noted that here that it is not within a fire district, and being bulk fuel, what provisions are in place in case of fire?
Did you understand that?
Yes, you're asking if we would have any separate, like, fire suppression systems, or, I guess, we'd be following all national and local codes for the NFPA.
Can you explain what those are briefly?
So really, for some, a facility like this, because propane vaporizes quickly when released to the atmosphere, there's really not a large need for any additional fire suppression system. You, I guess, rely on local fire response.
And how far are you from the fire district?
I guess I am unsure of that.
Does staff know that question?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Alexander, though the Golden Valley Fire District does encompass some of the lots in the area, New Core Steel is the other side of the railroad tracks in this location, and they are within the Golden Valley Fire District.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Thank you, sir. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number seven B, Alex Brolin.
Item seven B is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit of, or, excuse me, for a portion of Assessor's parcel number 20612014 and 20612016. for a portion of assessors parcel number 206 12014 and 206 12016 to allow for the storage of flammable liquids and gases and bulk fuels in an MX heavy manufacturing zone in the Kingman vicinity. This special use permit would apply only to the portion rezoned MX from item seven A. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? Oh, he's the same man? Okay, all right. I'll close the public hearing and ask, are there any questions from the commissioners or the applicant?
I have a question.
Commissioner Morris?
The applicant indicated that they'd be propane was what they were storing, but yet we're approving it for liquids and, and, I forget the.
Bring him up on the screen.
Huh?
Him up on the screen. Yeah.
IT, can you please bring the applicant up on the screen for the, thank you.
What are you storing?
Yes, so it would be liquid propane and, and tanks.
Pressurized cool tanks, yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing done, thank you, sir. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that it is only for propane.
Have a second? Okay, Hubbard is seconding. I have a, a motion by Commissioner Morris, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number eight, staff report by Amy Patsy.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 204 17023 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 7A agricultural residential seven acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here and wishes to speak? Or questions? Are there any questions from the commissioners for this applicant? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number nine, staff report Peggy Clements.
Item number nine is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 313 55015A from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a land division in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends denial for this proposed rezone as it is considered to be spot zoning and not in character with the density of the surrounding area.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask if you would like to come down and speak. The applicant.
Jonathan Carlton, 2110 Seneca Street, Kingman. I just had a question really. What constitutes a spot zoning or what is the definition of spot zoning?
Well, I, I believe I will hand it to Scott to explain that.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, spot zoning would be anytime that the surrounding zoning does not match what is being proposed. In this instance, the densities for the surrounding properties are all above the 10 acre minimum and going down to a five acre minimum. There is nothing in the vicinity that is like that, and so this would be considered spot zoning.
What is the vicinity?
Thank you.
What is the vicinity? There are, there's an entire section of one acre minimum parcels less than three miles from this property, so I'm just curious if there's a radius or what is, what constitutes the vicinity?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we kind of, when we do look at rezones, we do look at the subject area, usually it's within a mile or so. This one, yeah, there are some properties three miles away that are at a lower density. That would be too far for us to consider this to be in compliance with meeting the spot zoning.
Okay. Any questions for this gentleman from the commissioners?
I have, I have a couple.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
So is this, is this a 10 acre parcel currently?
No, it's nineteen.
It's a 20 acre parcel? Okay. So this has the ability to, to, with this zone, you could create four different lot, or new lots.
The proposal is to create three lots, 6.47 acres each.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes, that we incur with staff recommendations and deny the zone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Morris, seconded by Commissioner Bradshaw. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So this motion was denied. Item number 10, staff report Melanie Stradlin.
Item number 10 is an evaluation of a request to rename a road located in the southwest quarter of Section 15, township 29 North, range 17 West, from Sampson Road to Lone Jack Road, located in the Kingman area. Evaluation is determined whether to approve, all should be granted to rename a road is detailed in the staff recommendations and shown on Exhibit A and as requested by the property owner, Kip Share. There have no been, there have been no objections received to the proposed road renaming. The staff recommends approval to rename Sampson Road to Lone Jack Road as outlined in the staff recommendations and subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Is the applicant here? Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask the commissioners, do you, well, we have no one to question. So I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second the motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 11, staff report Chief Building Official Albert S-M-A-B-Y.
Smaby, Gilbert Smaby.
I am so sorry, I am the worst with names.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, item 11 on your agenda is a possible amendment to the Mojave County building ordinance. Basically, two amendments within the sections. The proposed amendments will allow for updated geotechnical reports and alternate testing methods to determine soil classifications and establish soil bearing pressures. In layman's terms, that's, we're actually providing additional tools in which a person could identify soils for certain foundation requirements in the International Building Code. This ordinance was unanimously voted by the Building Code Advisory Board and before you today.
So what you're, you're saying is, in the event you don't do compaction?
This is a, in a lot of cases, we require a geotechnical report to classify what the soils are, to establish bearing pressures for foundations.
Right.
So this, in one essence, we are allowing a different type of testing material, like soils. Instead of soils testing, we are going to allow for septic inspection or septic testing, which has the same kind of soil configuration testing. That would just give an additional tool to the developers instead of the main geotechnical report.
So are you, if you, if you find a soil that you're, that you're happy with, does that mean there'll be no compaction test?
Not necessarily, Chairman. You can have compaction, but this is actually identifying the type of soil that you're going to be compacting. So if there's any clays or any expansive soil, that's what we want to address, and that's typically what the report addresses. And usually the, we get an engineer's recommendation on how to construct the foundation based on that type of soil.
So it'll be for foundations as well as septic tanks?
Not necessarily. The, this, when somebody does a septic testing, they actually do a soils analysis of the soil, and that soil analysis is similar to a geotechnical report.
Okay.
That would identify those types of soils.
I believe Commissioner Hubbard wants to ask you a question.
What kind of tools are you going to use? You're going to core drill it? Core samples? You got a geologist that's going to look at it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hubbard, when they do a geotechnical report, typically yes, there's core samples, there's, yeah, I mean, a full engineered report would be provided to us.
So how, how deep are you going to go?
That's up to the soil engineer.
The size of the building you're going to put on it?
Again, that's up to the engineer who is providing the test.
Do they have a lab close by?
The geotechnical company would have a lab and do an analysis of the soil. Correct.
Any other commissioner have any questions?
Yeah, I want to applaud the.
Commissioner Morris?
Applaud the building department for coming up with an alternative to a full geotechnical for, especially when it relates to small individual projects, houses on existing small lots, because the, a full geotechnical report is, is very burdensome and in most cases, most cases, not necessary.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will open the meeting to the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on this subject? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion. This is a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Commissioner Morris, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number 12, staff recommendations of approval. Commissioner Martin?
I would like staff to consider rewording your approval comment because it seems that the public, some of the applicants have been taking it as the county is behind the proposed project. We've even had a commissioner or so here feel and mention that because you give your approval, that we should go along with your approval. I think it's misleading to the public, and if you could reword your verbiage to say staff recommends or just staff's findings, so that you're more neutral and the public doesn't have a perception that you're trying to push something through.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, yeah, we, we would be happy to accommodate the commission on however they would like us to, to word our, our recommendations. We currently do state that we, we recommend approval or we recommend denial, but if there's a different way that you'd like us to present that, if we, one of the, the thoughts that we had was maybe just stating that the, the item or application meets all of the development services requirements and we have no objections or something like that?
That, that would.
If that sounds better, and then if you'd still.
Because last month, we had the solar project using your approval verbiage as a recommendation to push it through.
So, so if I, if stating that the staff has no objections, is that a better way of going about it or that it meets our, our requirements?
Meets requirements.
Yes.
Needs requirements?
Yes. I'm not too sure that's sufficient, meets the requirements. Commissioner Hubbard?
I think she's right. We need a lot more information on something as sensitive as those solars at, they didn't come out too good, as far as I'm concerned. The information on, you give an approval, like she said, we need more information that, maybe somebody up here has a little more information on solar projects than you, you folks do. No, no, no offense, but I think there was questions we asked that weren't answered.
So.
And it ended up going to the board of supervisors with not all the information. I think we need more information to make a lot of these decisions.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, so staff would still create the same staff, we would still do the same research. We have our findings of facts. We would look at all of our ordinances, our general plan. Essentially, when, when staff is looking at these items that are presented to you, what we're looking at is, is does it meet our zoning ordinance? Does it meet our general plan? Is there, is there any conflict with the surrounding uses or proposed uses? So that's what we're looking at. We would still provide that same level of, of review on every staff report, but if there's a different way that you wanted us to present that in the end, instead of saying staff recommends approval, we could change the wording at the end stating that staff has researched the, the proposal and it meets the county's requirements as far as the planning, the zoning ordinance, the general plan. If it doesn't meet it, would you still want us to say staff recommends denial or would we, would you want to just go the route of saying that it does not meet the requirements? Okay.
I want to commend you because I noticed this time that we were sent a copy of all the things that you did on each to make the approval or non-approval, and I appreciate that. As a matter of fact, I'm intending to copy those off.
I want to say.
Bring them with me.
The thing is, when it comes, this comes out and the public sees it says approval, why do they need us? So your verbiage, you're right. Let us make the approval, and you recommend one way or another. You guys know how to ver, you know, how to word it, but we're the ones that's supposed to give the approval.
Recommend this.
And, and the public will look at it and say, well, wait a minute, what's going on here? They have a staff making approval before it goes to the commission, and the commission wasn't even listened to.
Chairman, if I may, just, just back up a, a bit and kind of go through the process on this. The staff receives applications from applicants that, you know, have different projects that they'd like to see, that they'd like to perform on either property that they're buying or that they own, and they come in, they work with staff and describe their project, and we work with them to try and put together an application and put together a presentation for the board, or for the commission. Staff is, is well versed in, in planning and zoning. They, many of them have degrees in planning and, and are professionals in that, in that field. So it's, it's more a matter of just checking boxes. They're, they're looking at the application to see, is it the right, from a zoning standpoint, is it the right fit for that location? Does it meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance? Does it meet the, the requirements of the, of the general plan? And they do make a recommendation to the commission that based on their background, based on their, their education and experience, that this is a good fit for this area or this is not a good fit for this area based on, on the zoning ordinance and the general plan. So it, it's more than just check, 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 here you go. It is, there is a lot of work and effort that goes into this. So the, the verbiage that's currently being presented is that staff is recommending approval to the commission. Staff's not approving it. We're recommending that, hey, this does meet the requirements of, of the zoning ordinance, this does meet the requirements of the general plan, and based on those requirements, we recommend that it be approved. Now, the commission, you guys get to go a little bit more than, than the technical side of it. side of it. You guys get to look at, in your individual areas, does this make sense? Does this, does this fit with the, the surroundings or, or the different types of, of communities that, that you all live in? And, and at that point too, you're also taking into account public input, their, their considerations, what they'd like to see, and, and you guys have the, the very difficult job of merging all that together and then making your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So I can see, I definitely see the point where it can be construed that staff says, this is a great idea, we, we want to see this project go, and, and really staff does a great job of remaining neutral in, you know, these various projects, but rather looking at, at them on their merits and from a land use perspective, does it fit in this area? Does it meet the, the requirements? So just wanted to provide that, that additional backup as we, as we continue this conversation. So thank you.
We appreciate all your hard work, and I know since I've been a commissioner, we've been provided a lot more information than when I first started, so it's very helpful. I just think it's the public perception that you're trying to with the approval. So Scott's verbiage, I think, would be very helpful and make it more neutralized to the public.
Chairperson Gillette, can I just make a statement?
Certainly.
I just wanted to let the commission know that once we, once you make your, once you vote, we send out an action agenda, we post that, and it does say that this is what your recommendation is. If there's, if there's dissension, we include that as well. When it goes to the board, on a board action form, we also clarify there in bold what your recommendation is so that not only the public, but that the supervisors see that as well.
Well, personally, I'm, I like the way it is, that the staff recommends approval or denial, and I'm afraid that we might be making a major decision on the complaint of maybe one or two people, because I have received none of those. Any other commissioners heard from, have you, Alexander?
No, I have not heard.
And neither have I or any of the other commissioners heard from anyone who thinks that.
I've heard from the applicants that say the staff is recommending it.
Commissioner?
Alexander?
I would just like to say that, you know, I think we, we as a commission have a full understanding of what that's saying. You have the great burden of making sure that it all complies. I don't have any problem with saying that it meets the requirements, the criteria, if it makes it more understandable to the general public. I for one put all my faith and trust in when you say that this is workable or this is not workable, that you've done all of the, the research. I trust that very, very highly, 100% highly. I just would like to make sure that our public understands, and this kind of puts you more in of a neutral position, I think, when we say meets requirements. I don't want to say it meets this and it meets that and it meets this, so, but saying that it meets criteria or requirements, I think would be a nice clarification for the general public, and, you know, it's, I just think it would be helpful for their understanding, more so than just for our understanding.
Madam Chair, if it pleases the commission, the staff could take a look at a number of other jurisdictions and see what options they're using as far as how they're making recommendations to the commission. We can reach out to our colleagues at other counties and cities and see how that verbiage is used in, in their meetings and bring that back to the commission.
I think that's a good idea.
That would be appreciated.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
Standardization is good.
Yeah, it's not a bad thing at all. Commissioners' comments, I did want to tell everybody that I went to the meeting on Monday. The place was packed, there was only standing room only. It was a very interesting meeting, very long, I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, but it was enlightening to me in the fact that the, the supervisors, they rely on us, and I, it made me feel better that they do because they, they pay attention to what we do and they know that we do our homework. Anyone else wishing to say anything? Okay. Then having, oh, I got a call to the public. Is there anyone here wishing to speak at the call to the public? Hearing none, I close the call to the public and having no business further to go before this board, it's adjourned.